Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Comnic?
Here.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Here.
Councilmember Colomer is absent. Mayor Moore?
Here. This time I'd like to ask everybody in attendance to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in honor of our troops. Thank you. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda. A routine in nature will be passed with one rule to the council. Should any member of the council or the audience wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration, please say so now and it will be removed and considered following the approval of the remaining consent items. Consent items include minutes from the council meeting on August 25th, 2025, payroll for the pay period ending August 9th in the amount of $250,070.66, staff reports, Goodfellas Tag Days, and Kiwanis Hispanic Heritage Celebration's street closure. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items? No moved.
Second.
Called the roll.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Next we have approval of the bills for September 8th in the amount of $383,042.65. Do we have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
No moved.
Second.
And any discussion?
Um, start with E Quantum Consulting, Electric Consulting. What were we, what information were we receiving from them or what guidance?
So that's, they're the ones that put together our, um, electric utility bids. They also have reviewed some of the solar proposals and things like that that we get. But what we do with them is their bill is split up over a 12, over a 12-month period. So it's not like they bill us once, we pay.
Is this a bit of a retainer?
Thing. We pay a regular ongoing bill for them.
Okay, uh, is it within the scope of requesting from them some more information about the aggregation?
We, we can, yeah, absolutely.
All right. If we have somebody on retainer, I, I mean, I think that we would like to know more information about what that would look like since it is in our code. Um, again, James, the Hutchinson Engineering, uh, invoice 15703. Uh, we have that on here as North Boss Street and Elm Street. Please can we ensure that Hutchinson is billing us separately? So we can do some value engineering on these costs and understand what we're getting for, for each individual project since they were approved separately. Um, I mean, it's just going to help us in the future when we know what we're getting for what we're paying. And then when we have another project of similar, uh, you know, complexity, that's, that way we can do some better value engineering, you know, that we've talked about before. So, um, anytime we commingle the cost of two projects, it makes it more difficult to understand what we're getting. Potter and Sons Black Topping. Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you for fixing the roads before hog days, particularly the spots that were on the hog jog. Um, but this particular one here, $33,000, um, is this not above our $25,000? And should we not be bidding out for this work?
Um, it is above $25,000, yes, and it should be bid.
So...
I will check.
I, I know that we did not see a bid or, or get to weigh in on that. So we need to do better about following, you know, our processes for procurement. Um... Uh, U-line, uh, we're looking at, uh, this is page, I don't have the page number here, 32, but it's, um, 196975603. Says open hole safety and downtown garbage cleanup materials, $2,000. Um, what type of open hole safety equipment did we procure?
That for the open hole on Elm?
I can't say specifically what that would be. It could be the snow fencing. It could be cones that go around on the, um...
Okay. I, I guess I would like, I would like to know more about what we're buying, um, and why we're not buying lighted barricades. With more of our streets requiring more maintenance, Elm, East Street, uh, the ones out on, uh, Page recently, it was noted by people that are in the industry and are aware of OSHA standards that we should have the lighted barricades so we can protect our pedestrians and, and, and vehicles, so... Um, sewer reimbursement, is this a leak that was maybe refunded? $800?
Not a, not a leak necessarily. It was plugged up. And the process normally is when a sewer's plugged, if we're not sure and they're not sure, we have them have a plumber come out and investigate.
Okay.
So that we don't go out and investigate all these private, uh, sewer issues. Uh, but occasionally when the results show that the blockage might have been on our side, we do reimburse the homeowner. So on this one, on that one, it's a reimbursement for them having a private plumber come out and find out that we had a broken lateral.
Okay, okay, great. I'm sorry. Oh, what, what do we, uh, procure for?
Uh, safety fence and then traffic barricade lights.
Oh, so we did get some lights?
So lights and fence.
Twenty of them.
Fantastic. I just haven't seen any of them out yet.
Of the safety fence.
Okay. Um, so maybe you need more than 20 lights. I don't know. Okay. All right, well, great. Thank you for getting the lights to the public works and for being proactive there. That's all I had. Thank you.
What else? Call the roll.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye. We'll move on to the public comments. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council regarding anything not on the agenda, please step up the microphone, state your name. And please bear in mind that there's a three-minute time limit and speak loudly so that residents at home are able to hear what you have to say. Seeing as we have no takers, we'll move on to, uh, new business. Item A is a proclamation Hispanic Heritage Month and Kiwanis Hispanic Heritage Celebration. This is an annual proclamation to recognize the achievements and contributions of our Hispanic community. I will read that now. Whereas each year from September 5th to October 15th, excuse me, September 15th to October 15th, our nation observes Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrating the rich cultures, vibrant traditions, and countless contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans who influence, has shaped the social, cultural, and economic fabric of the United States. And whereas the city of Kiwanis is proud to be home to a growing and a diverse Hispanic community that continues to enrich our city through entrepreneurship, arts, faith, education, family values, and civic engagement. And whereas the Kiwanis Commission on Human Relations has worked diligently to foster inclusion, understanding, and cultural appreciation across all communities, and has demonstrated exemplary dedication in organizing events that unite residents and honor diversity. And whereas the committee members' ongoing effort culminate in this year in the third Annual Kiwanis Hispanic Heritage Celebration to be held on Saturday, September 27th, 2025, bringing together residents and visitors for a joyful day of music, dance, cuisine, and community spirit. And whereas this celebration not only honors the legacy and ongoing achievements of Hispanic Americans, but also strengthens the bond of friendship and mutual respect among all who call Kiwanis home. Now therefore I, Gary Moore, Mayor of the City of Kiwanis, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Kiwanis. I encourage all residents to participate in the Third Annual Kiwanis Hispanic Heritage Celebration and to recognize and celebrate the many contributions of our Hispanic community throughout the year. As witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kiwanis to be affixed this 8th day of September, 2025.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Look forward to it.
Yes. Thank you guys.
I'm sure you put the last name Lopez down for her.
She's got a new last name.
Okay, we'll move on to item B. Bill number 25-83 ordinance granting a special use permit to Larry Neils for property located at 324 East Second Street. Larry Neils has requested a special use that will allow him to park his trailers and pickup truck on the property he recently purchased. Do I have a motion? No moved.
Second.
And any discussion?
Have any questions or anything?
The only, I, I know, I had received a couple of phone calls with some concerns from one particular neighbor and that neighbor, once they saw the, uh, stipulations, were satisfied and withdrew any, uh, complaints that they had. So that was my only concern, so...
Okay, I think we all drive past the property hundreds of times a year, so...
Yeah, so... Have you anything you want to add?
Yes. First of all, uh, Larry, the building looks great and, and the lot looks great. Um, I, I do want to say that and start there. And I do not have, uh, any objection to the special use permit for automobile, truck, utility trailer, tractor, or bus storage yard as allowed by our codes in B3 districts. I do have a problem with the scrap. And the scrap on a trailer, the scrap on the ground, or anything else in our city codes is not allowed in B3. It's allowed in M1. And any scrap storage yard at all, as defined in our codes, does require screening if it's stored as a matter of routine storage anywhere within 1,000 feet of any roadway. So I do have a problem with the stipulations where we are allowing scrap. And I would like to see this go back to the Planning Commission for a relook at the, uh, criteria or, um...
It, it doesn't have to go back to the Planning Commission. We could add to the stipulations ourselves.
Okay, I, I guess what I would, I mean, what I would prefer we consider approving is just what we say we're approving, which is an automobile, truck, utility, tractor, and bus storage yard for operable, operable vehicles only, um, and have no mention of scrap. Because what really triggered this whole discussion was a case report on 7/30 where the complaint was land use violation operating a scrapping recycling operation, not necessarily the fact that there was vehicles parked on this lot. So if we intend to answer that complaint, we need to hold our property as it's zoned to our codes, which does not allow for scrap storage in a B3 district, but does define that the necessity for screening.
Does anybody want to add on that matter?
Well, I think, um, and Keith can probably shed some light on it too, the screening, I believe, was a problem, um, for visibility.
Oh, I, I mean, so we can say no screening, but then that means no scrap. I'm, 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 I do understand the, uh, emergency vehicle reason for no screening. Uh, I also do understand that no screening is, is required unless a B3 district, uh, abuts residential. Now, that particular property is surrounded by residential, though each of those residences are in a B3-zoned property. So, uh, kind of creates a conundrum of, uh, what is it zoned and what are we really wanted to, wanted to be used for? And I'm not sure about the history of, uh, when it was zoned B3 and if the houses were built as an acceptable use within B3. Nonetheless, um, my issue here is that if we're not going to screen, we can't allow scrap storage. Go ahead.
So the houses would be lawful non-conforming?
Sure.
Because houses existed prior to 1960 when the city of Kiwanis adopted.
Adopted the land use.
So that's why they're there.
That's good, that's good, uh, and, but thank you.
Larry, I have a question. If you could step up the microphone, please. When you would bring scrap to that property, how long would it, on an average, stay there?
It usually stays on the trailer a week or two. Most people will bring scrap and put it on my trailer. And I check the lot every day and make sure there's nothing laying on the ground because I don't not want it to blow around or anywhere.
Is there a reason?
Most of it's washers, dryers, people that can't just take one appliance to the junkyard.
So you, I'm guessing, let it build up so you can take an entire load rather than take individual items?
Normally when the trailer floor is full, we haul it down. It's usually a week, week and a half, two weeks. I could empty it tomorrow and somebody will start filling it already. That's just how fast people bring stuff to it. People that have cars don't want to go driving through the junkyards and get scrap metal on their tires. So they usually just bring it over and say, hey, I'm putting this on your trailer. As long as it's on the trailer, I have no problem.
Well, like I said, I've driven past it hundreds of times in a year and I've never, it's never been, uh, something that caught my eye as, um, anything to be concerned with. And to combine that with the fact that you've made the property look even better, so...
Well, I sort of decided, Adam, though, if we're, if we're going to have complaints about our city residents, when they talk about their scrap, I think we should, we should stick with the code. It should be for all.
Yeah, you can drive around town. You see trailers with scrap on them all the time.
But doesn't make it right?
No, it does not make it right.
And that property is in a highly visible area?
I just believe we have, so I acknowledge your statement, you know? And I believe we just have more work to do in this town. Um, we, we need to, we need to continue to apply our code. It's here for a reason. Um, and... I was going to pull up the why we even, uh, addressed special use. It's a good three bullets. Um, I don't have it right in front of me. It, Larry, I do, I, I do agree you're providing a service and, and, and my intention is to, I don't want to like, prevent you from providing that service. Um, but as the service you are providing is per Chapter 114, dealing in what our code calls junk, and if we are dealing in that, it is required to either be in an M1 Manufacturing One District, uh, and if it's within 1,000 feet of a roadway, be screened. I, I just don't think that this is something that is within the context of a special use permit, these particular stipulations, so...
I know other situations we've had. Both of them, they're coming to my mind are both on North Main Street and they were required to have, have fencing.
I agree. I, I, I do have that. It was 1047 North Main. Uh, it was approved in '23 and you all, uh, earlier this year in '25 rescinded it until it was improved and then it was re, uh, reauthorized as a special use.
Uh, that was one of my, I was thinking of, then there's another one.
And at that one, and I may remember this wrong, so, um, correct me if I am, but I believe that was a lot of the neighborhood that wanted that fencing as well.
Yeah, yeah, they, they required it.
The only other thing that makes that case slightly different than this one is that was, uh, abutting residential to the west, which requires screening. Residential is not requiring screening in this instance. It's the scrap nature, not just the special use as a vehicle or trailer storage yard.
Well, I know that there were concerns, you know, with the visibility from the perspective of emergency vehicles traveling in and around the area. Larry, would it be possible if we required some type of screening to put up a partial screening that would not hinder the visibility, that, that kind of stuff could be put in? Would that be something that would be doable?
Like a fire fence or?
Yeah.
It's got to be, it's got to be eight feet tall and it can't be visible. So it's got to, it's got to be...
Enclosed fence.
It has to be enclosed.
Yes.
That might be expensive, but yeah, I'll have to look into it. I mean, I don't know if I can afford it or not.
That, that's why I was asking. I didn't know if that's something that would be doable for you.
Yes, I don't know.
It's kind of tough, you know, to, to permission to violate our own ordinances.
Well, that's why we have a Plan Commission too, though. You know, their goal, they, they're supposed to give us recommendations, correct?
Uh, so there's no evidence that they considered Chapter 114 in any of their notes. So that's why I was, uh, recommending to send it back to them and, and ask them to... The other thing that I would be happy with is if we just lined out all the stipulations that allow scrap storage and approved the special use for...
Storage of automobiles, trucks, trailers. So the scrap storage, if the scrap's on the trailer... Read that ordinance to me.
A plot of ground which may be covered with buildings, partially covered with buildings or without any buildings, which plot is used by anyone for buying, selling, storing, exchanging, bailing, packing, disassembling, handling, wrecking, or trading in junk dismantled or wrecked motor vehicles or parts thereof, dismantled or wrecked farm machinery or parts thereof, industrial scrap, scrap iron, any secondhand article whatsoever, including but not limited to the foregoing enumerated items, et cetera.
So what's the implication on that? Is that all scrap?
Yes, it basically...
Or is that scrap sitting on land? And I'm not trying to nitpick this, but, um, those are two totally different things.
There's no, there is no allowance for, uh, a mobile junkyard. And again, junkyard is the term used in our code. I'm not calling your lot a junkyard. Um, that's, that's what our code allows for dealing in scrap within a lawful manner. And if you do deal in scraps such as this, you have to have a license from the city. License required, 11402.
Do you have a lot of scrap licenses out? Benny?
Cernovich's fences.
Actual scrap yards? And that's the differentiating point I was trying to make. That I believe that that ordinance addresses a scrap yard. I don't believe what Larry has... No, hold on, let me talk. I don't believe that what Larry has is a scrap yard. Is the scrap always on a trailer or in a truck?
Yes, always on the trailer.
So I don't think we're comparing apples to apples. That's my opinion.
Keith, how do you, how do you interpret that? So over my years, as I discussed with Adam earlier, um, when scrap is on a licensed trailer, it's considered cargo. Um, in past city attorneys that we've had, they didn't want to fight that one in court.
You guys already talked about it?
I'm sorry?
You, you already mentioned that to Adam?
Yeah, just a brief discussion before we...
Do you don't agree that it's cargo?
I do not. I believe by his own admission, it's there for people to bring the junk and drop it off. That is dealing in it. That is by our definition. I'm not, I'm not seeking to circumnavigate our codes through, uh, some context here. Uh, I would rather us, if, if we want to address that, we can address that. But this is dealing in things that we do not want to have on our open roadways. I think that that was the intention of this code, thus putting it in M1 and behind screening if it's within 1,000 yards, excuse me, 1,000 feet of any roadway, not just a primary roadway such as 34, which is essentially our front yard for this town.
I see it as the scraps on the trailer, on the truck. Um, I don't think that code applies. I am in favor of what the Planning Commission already recommended. I don't think it's in our best interest to get into a technical discussion to make it harder on someone. And that is just my opinion.
I know a part of the stipulation was that, uh, the, any items on the trailer are to be strapped down. Are you checking that on a daily basis?
Yeah.
If I had driven past the property over the number of years that we've been here and said, oh my God, that looks horrible, or we need to do something about that. Um, prior to me hearing that code, I had never associated that into my mind. Um, that topic's never come up. I have never had one person in town approach me and say, hey, this is horrible. Have you had people approach you?
No.
So that's, that's my thoughts and that's where I'm at.
Well, I... I have my mind made up. I'm, I'm ready to vote if anybody else is. Call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Tie goes to the runner. Ever been forced with a tie before?
It's, it's not a majority. It's not a yes.
Okay. The, uh, it fails. Sorry, Larry.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C. Bill number 25-84 Resolution authorizing the expenditure of tax increment financing revenues for the improvement of public infrastructure in the 100 block of North Lexington Avenue. City is allowed to use TIF funds for infrastructure improvement. City staff is requesting funds to put in a sidewalk in Kirby on the east side of the 100 block of North Lexington Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And discussion?
My only discussion, I thought we requested this one to either be presented in... My only discussion, I thought we requested this one to either be presented in, you know, comprehensively with the other TIF application for this area, or be more considered within the context of a downtown plan. Um...
Yeah, and...
So I'm kind of confused why it's on the agenda.
That, that might be. You know, I, I know I was asked if I, if we could do a, a drawing or some sort of illustration that showed where it was going. Um, what I didn't point out last time is that, um, while Gustafson is working on a TIF application that's more overarching, it's not necessarily true for, um, Lewis Auto Body.
Sure.
And the idea of getting this piece done, the question was asked, is this, um, the, the best use of these funds in this, in this TIF? And I will say that in the downtown area, what you truly, what most people truly consider the downtown area, this is the single opportunity to be able to come in, do something, and make an improvement without having to worry about underground water lines or sewer lines or, or things that are gonna, kind of blow up on us. It is a, it is an area with one of our highest, um, sales tax generators, um, who is trying to make, um, some rather bold, uh, expansion and, and renovation, um, plans to their, their building. Uh, if we could handle the public infrastructure piece of that, uh, put in curb, sidewalk, uh, and, and a new street surface, um, after the curb is in, that, that whole block suddenly kind of turns around, um, especially after he's done with the building rehab. Um, but I don't, if you want to wait, you can wait, but at the same time, there are some advantages to getting something done when we can do it.
I also know that, uh, you mentioned the, uh, improvement of the property itself and the building. I, what he's all sudden done, I know, last conversation that I have had, it's gonna be about a two mil-, two million dollar investment into that area that he's gonna have in an improvement in the building, in, on the dealership itself, so... Uh, I, I think, in my opinion, we need to take care of the, uh, you know, businesses that are bringing in that kind of money and, and showing that kind of improvement. You know, it's coming upon us to not only seek new businesses, but to, uh, you know, take care of the businesses and retain the businesses that we already have. And I think this is a very small step for us to take to show our investment into him and his investment into Kiwanee.
Gustafson, what they did, it looks, looks really nice on there. When you beautify that city, that's what attracts businesses here, too. I, I think it's a excellent idea. So for that area?
I don't have any disagreement with any of those comments. I, I in fact affirm them. Uh, my only issue here is we approved the TIF, um, you know, a few months ago for the, uh, first street, that's first street, right, um, side as an opportunity when Gustafson was doing some other efforts there on that building. This particular one, I'm unclear what's going on, uh, what will be done to the material in between the mountable curb and the sidewalk, and who's going to bear that cost, or is that going to be done? Um, also, right now...
That's part of this, it isn't drawn, but that area between the green and the yellow, so to speak, is, is public right-of-way. It is public property. It would be no different than on-street parking in front of any of our downtown businesses.
Is that included in this price?
That is included in this price.
Okay, so, so now what this is becoming is a city project, not a TIF.
This is a city project using TIF funds, and that is...
I understand, but it was requested by a business. So what I'm trying, what I'm trying to differ, who submitted this?
Uh, I went down and met with Gustafsons and, um, and Lewis and the contractor that's doing it, and the contractor provided us...
But this was your motivation or the business's motivation?
It was something they were working on and said, "We're, we're working on this. Would you guys, uh, be willing to entertain the idea?" And, um, you get to decide.
All I'm trying to ask for is a comprehensive plan so that it doesn't look like we are ever a first come, first serve to the downtown. I agree that we want to support this, uh, employment and sales generator for our, for our community. What I'm asking for, more than anything, is a plan. Can we, can we get together? Can we, we're having an effort next spring to, uh, ren- renovate our downtown, and we don't know what we're doing past that. So is the TIF dollars going to be used to expand that effort, or is it going to be used on Lexington? So what I'm asking for is us to get started on planning so the community knows where the next dollar's gonna be spent and why. Not have it some, you know, selective process where we get it, you know, at a, at a meeting like this. That's all.
You guys have any comments that they'd like to add? Call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic?
We, we didn't choose what we were doing. There's three choices.
Correct. There was the part in front of Lewis Auto Body, the part in front of Gustafson's, or the part in front of, oh.
The last thing I'll say is if we're gonna do this, why aren't we getting bids? We only have one quote.
Correct. Um, and those table, you can get quotes. You can, and actually, you could vote to approve the use of TIF, seek bids, and award them.
I would like to do that.
This is committing the funds, it's not necess, it's not... Well, we can amend that.
Well, let's amend it.
Or you, or you...
I believe we should get bids.
We can get bids.
Additional bids to...
Would you like to make a motion to amend?
I would like to make a motion to amend.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion on bids?
Pardon?
Any other discussion on bid, getting bids?
Great idea.
So, um, on the, on the motion of amending it to strike Ratliff Brothers and get bids, uh, councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker? Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Back to approve.
And we have several issues on there, so, um, I think if we're going to do it, I don't want to just do a partial, you know, I, I, my opinion, if we're gonna do it, let's, let's do the whole thing.
I agree.
I agree.
Why is it like, if, if the bidding process is, we should bid off, so why don't you do that? Why did it come here without being bid out? I know it's a hard question, Gary. Like, if, if we are supposed to bid things out, why does it come to the council if it's not done the right way?
Um, so, there are options, let me see. There, there is a bid opportunity, that, there is an opportunity for you to do work without having to take bids. It's when you lump the whole thing together and, and you make that decision to do the whole thing. We didn't seek, um, bids for this because this is very similar to the, to before. It was kind of a, here's an opportunity, we're doing this work, we'd love to do that work. And I said, "Man, if they get that work done, then that allows us to still get that street paved this year with the, with the street work that we're gonna be doing."
I don't know that I agree with those statements. There's no opportunity here. This is an effort. There's no ground being broken over there currently. This is going to be a standalone effort with a scope of work. Uh, the opportunity that you're proposing at all was just because Ratliff was there doing the work on first that they bid out the scope of work on Lexington.
And what I was, what I said is, this is, if, if they do this, this is an opportunity for us to get this done while we're paving. I...
For sure.
And it was an opportunity to get some work done on a downtown street, um, in kind of short order, uh, if they were gonna be able to replace this, this fall and have it ready by the time we have whomever...
It's not major system acquisition. This is replacing mountable gutter and sidewalk. I mean, to get three bids and put it out, we don't need to, we don't have to...
It won't be hard. We can have it back.
We can have a two-week soak...
Yeah.
...time and, you know, just, just...
The only thing that is really, it's unfortunate the way this is written because their price is known. Um, it's gonna have to be, when we get bids, we're gonna have to do something
That's true.
To, to correct that.
Well, that's what we're gonna have to do, then.
Yeah.
So we're all on the same page with doing it all?
Yes, sir.
So... Call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Moving on to item D, bill number two-five dash eight-five, resolution approving the municipal insurance cooperative agency's second comprehensive amendment to the contract of the same. The city of Kiwanee is a member of the municipal insurance cooperative agency, also known as MICA, which enables self-insured municipal members to pool their risks so that their individual exposure to insurance losses is minimized. MICA's membership establishes bylaws that govern how its board operates. This resolution is in support of amendments to MICA's bylaws to help ensure the sustainability of the organization. Do I have a motion?
So...
Second.
End discussion. Call the roll.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
And item E, bill number two-five dash eight-six, resolution to authorize an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for the municipal maintenance of state highways within the city of Kiwanee. Every year, the State of Illinois requests an intergovernmental agreement for minor maintenance and snow removal on state routes coming through Kiwanee. The state provides their tabulations on what they are willing to pay for the maintenance work. Do I have a motion?
Second.
End discussion. Call the roll.
Is, is this of value to us? I mean, I know that we're only getting sixty-eight thousand, potentially seventy-five thousand dollars a year. What are we really able to accomplish with that to service this, I think, like, five miles of roads? So we're taking on work to remove snow, to salt, to paint, to maintain, uh, full-depth pothole repair, to repair any, um, lifting that has to do from expansion on the roads. So it's, it's an exceptional scope of work for an exceptionally small amount of money. Is this just kind of the way it is in Illinois? I mean, I know that we've done this the past ten years, um...
Yeah, and so th- these are ten-year agreements.
Right.
Um, and I, we've done them longer than that. And yes, um...
Take it or leave it? Because it, also, when I read the contract, it's, it's, we can't even buy equipment. If we buy equipment with this money, it becomes the property of IDOT. Um, and there's no promise of this money. If the budget doesn't allow, we will get nothing. So it's like, we take all the risk for the state.
Adam, the state of Illinois still thinks Mill Street Creek is an navigable water and you should be able to take a boat.
Okay, okay.
That's what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I, I just, since I'm new to it, I just, you know, wanted to ask some of the questions, but, I mean, it does not seem like a, uh, a lovely contract.
I couldn't agree more, but...
We have no liability, right? I mean, we're gonna have to do it anyway because these are our, our roads, and so it's like...
These are their, these are their roads. I mean, they are, that's why they're doing the agreement with us.
So if we say no, will they come and do the snow?
It would become their responsibility.
Yeah.
Um, but maybe it wouldn't get done, maybe it's not their top priority.
Okay.
Um, maybe most cities feel like this is the best they can get is to get something
Yeah.
for taking care of it. And I'm not trying really hard not to talk negatively about the people who are offering us the money and giving us something and still have to fix Sixth Street and...
Sure.
Seventy-eight and other streets as well.
Yeah.
But this is just for routine maintenance-type things. It's not for the bigger things that we sometimes have to undertake because they don't get done.
My concern is if we do not have an agreement with them, how quick are they gonna get to Kiwanee to plow the state highways coming through town? I, I, that, that is my concern. I don't know if it'd be valid or not, but that would be my concern.
It's a least of the...
And we have open projects, too, that we would like to continue.
Fair enough. I, I mean, I...
It, it's, they're not easy to deal with, plain and simple. Uh, we've, I, we've made trips to Springfield and on issues with the wastewater treatment plan as well as others, and to be flat on us, they're really not interested in what we have to say. They're, they're here, they're there to tell us the way it's gonna be.
Sure, sure.
Like dealing with the government.
Like, here's a priority.
Okay, so, I mean, this really is a take it or leave it offer. There's no negotiation at all.
Pretty much.
And it's just... Roger. Okay, yep, thanks.
Fortunately, that's the way it is.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, it's a wonderful point, but, uh...
Thanks, I just, I had not seen something like that before. And, and I did do some research, and I read the Cowbs', and theirs was word for word, just a different dollar amount based on a difference, linear mileage of road.
I think if you want to put a positive spin on it, you can feel, you can rest assured that the state is getting the most bang for their buck when it comes to transportation dollars.
As a taxpayer, I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, thanks for answering my questions. I just, uh...
I know it's not what you wanted to hear, but there's some sad facts in life, unfortunately. That, anything else? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Item F, bill number two-five dash eight-seven, ordinance implemented, implementing a non-home rule municipal retailers occupation tax and non-home rule municipal service occupation tax for the city of Kiwanee. This is an item that we discussed last week, and I feel we have more to discuss on, on this item. I think next council meeting, we can get the two, uh, engineering firms that we're, that will deal with this here to have a further discussion. I would like to have this, uh, this, uh, table till our next meeting.
Okay with that?
Yep.
I need a motion to table.
I'll, I'll make the motion to table.
I think, I think Tyrone said so moved, but...
I'm quiet, so don't banish me. I don't talk.
We need to turn your mic up.
I, I really, I really...
You didn't leave up.
I might have misunderstood you.
I just said, no, you, you get a mic. That's why I mic up.
He did say...
Would you like to be second?
I will, I will take second. I will be second billing.
Okay. Okay.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Comnic?
Aye.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
And finally, item G, discussion only, a comprehensive plan update. Who would like to open this one?
I put this in here, we had requested from ByState to get a proposal. They're somebody that we contract with on an ongoing basis because of the way federal law is and how it's structured, that, that they are our planning organization and they have professional people on staff that can provide services like this that we need. They gave me a proposal and I wanted to put it in front of you so that you could see the costs and you could see their timeframe of how long updating the comprehensive plan would take, just to kind of give you guys an idea or an understanding of it before we move too far down the road because with mobile home parks and other things, we are going to need some changes in the comprehensive plan and I just wanted to put this out there so that it would at least start your guys' thoughts on that process and what that might take.
I appreciate that. Anybody else have anything on that or? Question on that line, anything changes to what we presented?
Feel like it should cost more, cost less, be done quicker, be done.
Always less.
You think that idea, you think this is.
I, absolutely, we need to update our comprehensive plan.
And ByState are professionals in that area.
To what degree has the planning commission been brought in to weigh in on this? Or are we seeking them to own this?
This, this first step, this, we, we had talked about drafting a resolution directing them to undertake the process of updating the comprehensive plan, so, you know, if that's something you choose to do.
Right.
Then we can say, here are the resources available to assist you in that endeavor. Because I don't believe they could do it on their own and get the, the changes in the plan that, that really probably need to be there.
I appreciate that. And first of all, thank you for going out to ByState and getting this. I think that this is a fantastic start to get the ball rolling. Relatively appropriate price when you look at the labor that's going to be expended. One thing I'm a little concerned about is there's, it doesn't really specify to what degree our current plan will just be updated rather than really how much rethinking is going to go, be involved, which is why I would really like to see this go to the planning commission and get their input. I think if we're going to become a more highly functioning city government, we need to incorporate the planning commission because there's a number of people that have excellent thoughts and can provide a greater cross-section of community input through that element of our government before it comes, you know, to us to authorize, you know, partnering with ByState.
Yeah, I mean, I have no issues in, you know, having comment on, on any of it. Just a matter of setting it up and, but, you know, we're ways away from, from that at this point, but, yeah, several other steps that we have to take in the meantime, but definitely, you know, would be steps going into the end goal.
For sure. I, I guess what I don't want to do is just give ByState what we have right now because the last time it was really signed, I know it was updated a num, a few years ago, but it really has not been reviewed comprehensively.
Since two thousand.
Since two thousand. There was some, there was some economic update, I think in two thousand sixteen, even that's a decade ago. So, really, I think we, as a community, have a little bit of work to do before we hand something over to ByState to say, can you help us understand how to think about this and what are the best practices to guide us to where we think we want to go?
You don't think they would just do that as part of what, that you couldn't just say that and have them start off with that framework?
No, because, no, because they are process people. That we need to provide them input and concepts of where we want to go and concepts of what we're dealing with. You're not going to, I don't believe that we will get what we want out of this on eight meetings for eighteen thousand dollars. I think what we will end up really getting is a dust-off and a reprinting with some minor changes of what we already have. I do not think we will do the deep digging, the hard work that we need to do to kind of envision where we, you know, deal with where we're at and, and consider where we want to go. So, that's why I think that we have some work of our own to do, some, some partnering with the planning commission. I think even partnering with some other groups, dare I say KEDC, but, you know, some other, or the chamber for that matter. And we need to bring in some stakeholders and do it a little bit of ourselves and then bring in cham, uh, ByState in my opinion, to, to kind of put it all together, put a bow on it, give us a product that we can actually use. I don't know if that's doable, if you think so or not.
My opinion, if we're going to go that far, provide them that much information, we're basically doing their job. Why do we need them?
We, we might, we might do so well that we don't. We might find that we don't.
If, if we're going to, you know, if, if we're going to go through all that and, you know, expend that amount of energy and time, do it without, you know, that expense. That's just my opinion.
Fair.
Lot of other purposes. I mean, there's a lot more things we can do with that funds rather than just have them put a package together for us. Somebody to take the information that we give them and put it in a package and we have very capable people that could do that. Can you ask on this?
I, I will caution that I'm not sure that our staff has the time or in some, in some cases even the, the experience that, that ByState has when it comes to putting together this type of plan.
If we're going to go through, as Adam suggested, and go through and find all this information for them to just put into a package for us, they should be able to do it for far less than what is shown in that paper worth the two years.
And, and maybe we end up not doing all that, but I would like, you know.
Well.
I would at least like to give the planning commission an opportunity to try or to mull over on this and read over this and see if it's something that, you know, they would like to amend. I mean, otherwise, if we're not going to use elements of our government.
Yeah, and I, I'm not going to argue that point. I, I think you're right. My, my point is if, if we're going to go through and do all that legwork ourselves, like I said, you know, as you suggested, and maybe we don't end up using that and we go with ByState, but, I just lost my whole train of thought. I apologize, but.
Are we going to listen to the planning committee? If we agree on codes, will we follow them? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm just saying that we have a company that can do this for us. There's some hesitation in whether or not we have the expertise in-house to do that. And you want to send to the planning commission and we overwrote them on something earlier. So, what I'm saying is maybe our best option is to go with the people that, that do this at ByState.
Well, so to be clear, I asked to send it back to them to reconsider something that I thought had been overlooked. Okay. So, I don't, I, I do not appreciate being characterized that I necessarily voted to override them. I voted for something that I felt like was inconsistent with our codes. I do believe that our planning commission possesses value and that we should attempt to let them use it.
Going back to the point I was trying to make when I lost my train of thought, if we do go through and we use like our planning commission and other areas to come up with the information for this, what other options are available to us outside of ByState that would not necessarily be as expensive?
Not as expensive? Um, city staff, but.
But you've already indicated that that.
Interns, uh, planning, maybe you could find planning students to do that are, that are working on something through a college or something, but if you were to go private sector and ask engineering firms to come in and do this or somebody that has landscape architects and plant, land use planning, all of the, the things that go into making a comprehensive plan what it is, you're going to end up spending seventy, eighty at a, probably at a minimum to update the comp plan.
So, how many times, how many times of these meetings have we asked for an update to the comprehensive plan? How many years have we discussed this?
I, I know we did an update a couple of years ago when Mr. Hassy was asking for an update. Things, various things had not been automatically included, so we did change the comp plan itself to say, from now on, when one of these things is adopted, you know, when we change zoning, it's, it's automatically included in and, and might as well have been as if it was part of the comp plan. So, it's got that auto, that auto update aspect to it now that it didn't. Other requests, I, I know it's come up, but it's obviously never been such a priority that the council said, put together an RFP and, and get some updates on, you know, get us some bids on what it would cost to update the, the comp plan. I don't recall that happening, but we are in a different situation now with a mobile home park, a mobile home park, a mobile home park, so if nothing else, for the sake of the mobile home parks that, that the city is going to take ownership of, we need to figure out appropriate land use and zoning if there are to be any changes. If it's going to stay status quo, then it could stay like it is.
So, if we do this in-house, do we have any way of estimating our costs?
We could track ours and be able to.
But no way upfront?
No. Not a very good way.
So, we have the, we have the, the price from ByState. We have some hesitation in doing it in-house and we can't get the cost until we do it. Correct?
In-house, yes.
So, just based off that logic and a wise use of the taxpayers' money, it would seem that we should probably go with what we know and the people that are proven to do it. And that's, that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, if you're saying that if we use to try another, you know, any other options, it's going to more than double what we pay ByState, then, yeah.
I, I don't know of a cheap way to do this. When I was in college, I updated a comprehensive plan for the city I went to school in. It took forever, but it was cheap.
So, so here's the thing with that. When you have the word comprehensive, we should not have the word cheap next to it. You can continue your thought. But that's just right off the bat.
It's not, it's not inexpensive and to, to an extent, you get what you pay for. When I was in Maryville, Missouri in the nineties, I was looking at a comp plan that hadn't been updated since like seventy-two. It, it was not an easy process. I, it was a, a college student trying to invite the, the Chamber of Commerce and their Economic Development Corporation and church groups and, and all kinds of community leaders and I was not as skilled at, um, at serving as a facilitator for an open, for a roomful of people like that and jot down their ideas and everything as folks who do that all the time for a living.
It is a good plan.
They did adopt it, yeah, but.
It's still in place?
I hope it's not. That was the nineties. It's been a minute.
I, I feel that we need to have a lot more discussion on this. It's not, I don't, I think it's, it's too involved to come up with a game plan in just one, actually very short discussion.
We don't have a comprehensive solution.
But I, I definitely think we need to discuss this further and decide which direction we want to go with this.
I agree.
Set this up and.
I agree.
I mean, there's been a litany of suggestions made here and some very good suggestions and so I think we need to maybe even have a work session set up for this to decide which direction we want to go.
Let's kind of tie in with mobile home park and other topics that we've talked about potentially having work sessions.
Absolutely, so let's kind of, you know, work towards that end. Okay. Any other comment on, on that? Anything like that?
I agree.
At least we all agree.
Tyrone?
Good me to keep you up.
I'll sleep. I'll be gone.
So, that will end our, our new business. We'll move on to council communications and I'm, I'm going to start tonight. And I first want to start with something that I feel very remiss that I have not mentioned prior to tonight. I would like to offer condolences to the family of Gary Kilstrom. He was a twelve and a half year employee with the city of Kewaunee and he passed away, it's been probably what, a month ago? And I should have mentioned this in previous council meetings and I'm not going to make up any excuses. I simply overlooked it and, you know, Gary deserves better than that, so I apologize to the family for not having mentioned it until now. And I'd also like to mention the retirement of Anthony Finn from the fire department, so congratulations to him on his career and wish him nothing but the best moving forward. And, um, let's see. Hog Days appeared to be a very successful event again this year and apart from a late Friday rain shower, the weather was nearly perfect. You know, I received a few complaints, but nothing that was not easily handled. And two areas I'd like to really point out where I heard nothing but compliments, the one is I had three separate citizens approach me and were very pleased with the cleanup before each day started. So, thank you to the public works employees and anyone else that volunteered their time in, in helping clean up Hog Days and the people that volunteered, you know, special thank you to them is Charlie Mannan, Matt Brody, Gary Songer, Marcella Cordill.
Cordill.
Cordill, easier for you to say. Kristy Lemansky, Justin Peterson, Chris Shadrick, Tad Stout, Jody Greenhagen, Troy Finney and Brandon Peart. So, you know, my compliments to each one of those that made that. And secondly, I want to thank our very own Mike Comnic, you know, for arranging the entertainment on the main stage downtown, you know. Every year, I think there's no way you're going to outdo this year and every year you seem to do that, so, so thank you, Mike. I really appreciate all that you do with that committee and then bring in the entertainment. You know, you do a fantastic job. Now, I also want to thank Larry Flannery and the entire Hog Festival Committee as well as Mark McKennis and his crew for all they do putting the, the parade together each year. You know, many people, they just don't realize, you know, just how much work goes into planning and implementing an event of this size. You know, many people, they just don't realize, you know, just how much work goes into planning and implementing an event of this size. And the last thing I just want to bring up, just for you guys' information, I did sign documents last week for our agreement with Solar on Earth, so I'm hoping that in the very near future, we will be realizing the savings reflected in our electric bills. That is all I have, and so, Councilmember Baker?
I'd like to piggyback off you. I was telling someone, it was nice to see, like, we had a lot of people in for Hog Days, for, you know, for businesses. It seemed like we had a nice crowd even during parade, and I was talking to someone just about our police department and the fire department of the response. I am very proud of both departments, and in my field of work, response time is key. I mean, response time will make a huge difference, and so, I really, I will say that thank you, you all out there, what you do for us, the response time. I, every time I see a police car, I think everyone just seems so professional and just do just great work and diligence, and just with such heart and compassion. I mean, because even myself, I had a few medical condition with ambulance that would come to my house, and they were just so professional. It just, I'm really, I'm impressed, and I'm so proud, and so, I brag about you all the time. And I will say, the police department is my heartbeat, not saying the fire department is not, but just in my field, it's just, it's nice to see that. And I heard also, even Chief Canalski, even Mr. Mike Meeks, people talk about how great you guys do and the professional job you do. So, once again, I want to say kudos to you all. Thank you for keeping our city safe. So, thank you, sir.
Councilman Comnick?
I don't know, there were some adults in that line for the dunk tank, so... No, I just want to thank everybody. We had a good Hog Days. The weather always helps out with that, keeps people enjoying the festival and having fun. But it takes hundreds of people to put that festival on, so a very tiny committee may plan it, but to actually make it happen, it takes, it takes half the town, so. And the other half has to show up to go to it, so it's a win-win. But, yeah, big thank you to everybody for making that happen.
Thank you, Mike. Yep, hundred percent. Couldn't have said it better than any of you gentlemen, so thank you. It was a wonderful weekend. Thank you to the community. Thank you to the volunteers, the committee, again, police, fire, public works. It's amazing. Thank you.
Any other? Okay.
Go Bears.
Go Bears? Will, don't be so quick. We do have city announcements.
You want me to go really slow? The transfer station has two Saturdays left for the year. They are this Saturday, the thirteenth, and Saturday, the twenty-seventh. Heads up.
Now, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Call the roll.
Councilmember Cernovich?
Aye.